Good to go. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Okan Board of Selectmen for Monday, July 15th at 6:00 P. M. It being six o'clock, I am declaring this meeting open for business. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is public session. Is there anyone who has anything to say, discuss during public session? Paul?
Yeah, Paul O'Shea from Gaffney wrote, curiosity question, when I was home servicing my own standby generator, I was just curious about the standby generator for this building. Is it under a maintenance contract or gets periodically checked?
It comes on every so many days to do its, you know, to run a cycle. I haven't been down there for a while, so I haven't really listened to see if it's still running its cycle or not.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if it's set up for periodic checks and annual service. So I just, because we've had, what, three years now?
At least, at least it might be more.
Just wanted to be sure it was being maintained, that's all.
It was purchased, if I'm not mistaken, underneath the emergency department, which would be Tom Hughes, and I think he would have anything as to how that's being cared for.
It's highway because they got their own generator. There's a maintenance agreement.
Yeah, for the municipal building.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that feeds the police station too, doesn't it? I wonder if it's part of that same agreement.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. We should check it though.
We should check it. So I would, I would contact Tom and have him take a look at it to be sure that it's all right. Because he was part of the installation of that, as I think maybe Dennis Bergen was too, but I'm not sure for the electric.
Minor.
Yeah. But we'll get back to Tom and see what he says.
Okay, I was saying, it's just something I was thinking of, and it's something that's easily overlooked until you need it, you know?
Or until it doesn't come on.
Like I say, almost, yeah. Almost every morning, though, for a long time, I've been hearing it coming on, running through the cycle and then shutting off. It usually runs for a good 15 minutes or so.
Matt, would you just give Pete O'Connor some thought to lock, please?
Okay, anything else for public session? I know there aren't very many people here tonight. It's very slow night, very warm evening. Next on the agenda is a tree concern expressed to the Board of Selectmen by a citizen on Rutland Road. His neighbor's tree that was on the boundary line had come down, and as it fell, it hit the roof of his garage or barn out back, made a hole in the roof. And he needed to have it repaired. The neighbor who owned the tree did pay for the repair, and the repair has been done. But this person also noticed along that tree line, there are several other trees that are not in good shape. They look like they're about ready to come down, and he is afraid that when they do come down, either he could get hurt or more of his property could be damaged. He has spoken with his neighbor. He has asked him to please remove those trees. The neighbor does not wish to remove those trees. It would be approximate cost of $9,000 to have those trees removed, and the neighbor does not feel he would like to do that. And so the complainant was hoping or thinking that perhaps there is something that the Board of Selectmen could do about it, because he's looking at it as being a threat to a citizen of town. Whether it's just property could be damaged, or if he happens to be there, if the tree comes down, then he feels that he would be injured, and he is an 80-year-old resident. So I told him I would bring the topic up to the Board of Selectmen tonight to see what the Selectmen would like to do anything about it, or if we're even capable of doing anything, because it is private property. Any input?
Um, he had approached me, Pete O'Connor had approached me about three, four weeks ago, went down. I was just figuring it was a tree along the road. When he showed me and started explaining, I was like, um, we're kind of like way off the right of way here. Um, I think it falls into the realm of the civil matter.
Yeah, definitely a civil matter. It's nothing we can even get involved.
I told them he would probably have to take it to court.
I mean, we have.
Somewhere.
More issues with this building across the street, and we can't touch it.
True.
Just because it's private.
Yeah.
Private property.
And.
Exactly.
I explained that to him from the standpoint of the tree warden, that, no, that's nothing I can do.
Yeah.
Because it's, I mean, it's totally off the right of way, you know, for the town road.
Right.
So that's kind of where I left it with him and.
I still think it's, it's up to him to talk again to the landowner and try to get him to help out or help pay. And having the trees taken down, I know it is very expensive, but if something should happen and it should come down, then they would have to take it to court. But I will bring that information to him that we did discuss it.
They have insurance, yeah. They have insurance on the building.
He does have insurance on his home and his garage. This is part of what in the insurance company told him to do was go out and find a cost for those trees and then present it to the owner of the trees. And that's how he knows it's that much money to take it down, and he does not wish to spend that much money to remove those trees, so he's not going to move them.
I mean, we, we have the same issue in Okan with along the town roads. When trees fall across the town roads, it don't aren't part of the town right away, but they, they fall across, they take power out, and you know, we're just kind of in the position where we get rid of them, and our company and the own company come in and put all the wires and the poles back up. But I, I don't, what would, in a town where everything is so forested, you know, I've, I've said it before in meetings, I don't want to be involved in leasing that. You would.
No.
No, I truly would not either.
I don't even know how you would, because people would be. Yeah, too bad.
Yeah.
So. But it is an issue. I mean, the power outage is this winter, we're off the private property.
Yeah.
You know, they put power out, and it's nothing to do with the town trees. So the one on Turnpike and the one down this way, so. But it's just something we have to live with, I think, town-wise.
Yes, I'm sure.
It's just too big of an issue to.
Okay, but I will report to him that we discussed it, and this is what we came up with. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, time and attendance, Harper's payroll with Treasurer Wendy Graves.
Good to go.
Yes, please.
Thanks, Michael.
You're welcome.
Hey, I heard my name.
Wendy, we read at the last meeting the notice that you had sent to us about the payroll and time and attendance and like that. So we wanted to go through it again for tonight, if you could reiterate what we have on hand and what we can have on hand.
Okay, so the question was, do you want to continue with the time going forward with the time and attendance? I think Erin had thought that the sick vacation and personal time, you had to go with time and attendance in order to get that into Harper's, but Harper's actually already has that, and it doesn't cost anything more. The only thing it would entail is collecting the, collecting each person's balances, and then going forward, when they do their payroll, they'll list it on there, so I'll actually enter, enter it, and it'll reduce it from their, their total.
But it's not going to cost any money for anything.
Not if you go with that.
Doing it this way.
Right. If you go with the time and attendance, it will cost more.
More, okay.
It just, can I ask, the time and attendance, what else would that entail besides tracking the personal time? Is it just being able to electronically sign for a timesheet?
Yeah.
Payroll?
So the only thing time and attendance is, it's like an electronic time card or electronic timesheet.
But with that being said, I think we discussed that it wouldn't be beneficial for the police department nor the fire department, because they're so part, you know, so limited on part-time, and the fire department's on call, so it would be more like highway, the few employees in here and library.
Yes.
Which is what, not a whole lot of.
Well.
Yeah, I was gonna say like a dozen, a little over.
Fifteen max.
So what's working now is working. And if we add the vacation accrual and deductions and the sick time accrual and deductions, so they see it on their pay stub.
Right, it'll come out on their pay stub every week, so as they use the time, it'll draw it down.
Right, so that'll save a lot of, oh, what do I have left?
Right.
Or.
Well, they should be keeping track of it.
Well, they should be.
So you always have like a double check.
But that's on the kind of trust merit and who's, you know, trusting, not that anyone is not trustworthy.
If you have it on your, your pay stub, you can see it every other week.
Right.
It's in your mind, it's, it's not like you went months and months, and then you look at it, and well, what is it? I forgot.
Right.
You can just look at your, print your pay stub or tear it off and see that. And it gives them a receipt for it.
Yes.
Yes.
At the same time.
Yeah, it'll be right on their stuff. So if they used four hours of vacation, it would draw down the four hours, and they'd actually see it on their stuff.
Right.
I think the only thing that moving forward, regardless of which route the board decides to go, is figuring out what each employee, especially the part-time employees, what their time is for a holiday pay. You know, are they four hours paid holiday, are they six? Is it just, you know, whatever they're scheduled to work that day? Do they get paid if they're not scheduled? I think those are the little details that you would need, correct?
Right.
Anything else?
Do you have a template that all the departments can use to submit their payroll? Or do you know where we can get one?
Yeah, we can get one. I can work with the accountant on that, because they probably already have one that they like that works well. Yeah, no sense of recreating.
Yeah, I can find. Standardize what, what.
Don wants to have a standard.
Form, yeah.
Yeah.
That everybody uses instead of everybody having a different form.
And when do you think that maybe this would be the right time made possibly to try to track everyone back onto the same pay period?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not.
Yes. Yes.
I mean, once this is established or.
Would you like to pick a date, like September 1st? I wouldn't say August 1st, because I'm collecting taxes.
What's, what's? What's a pay period, the first pay period of September? That's a Thursday, checks are payable? Or due or available, or is it on a Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, that's what I thought. So all that would mean is whoever's here, they would get two, two checks in a row, to sync up, to sync everybody up.
Only one that's off a lot is the fires off by one week. Everybody else is, the police are off by one day.
I know that when the former principal assessor, or maybe had, she was there, they did, they did withhold of a whole.
They were a whole week.
Just because in case they couldn't get their timesheet signed, they had enough time. So it's just, so the first pay check of September would be, I believe, if I did this correct, September 5th. So warrants would be due August 29th, checks, and then employees receive check on September 5th.
What do we need to do to do the Sunday to Saturday?
I think it's a matter of getting everyone on board and then touching base with the accountant, making it all work. It's not a surprise, we've discussed this before. So, yeah. I think it's a matter of really just executing it. I know we were gonna do it, and then I forget, something came up that really just bumped it out of the way.
Having Lisa left.
Yeah, and then there was something else. So I think with this time of attendance, if we don't proceed with that whole thing, and we can just do that, I think it'll alleviate a little bit, and maybe can just jump on that. We can touch base with Lori.
Do we think it's syncing everything up for September 5th?
Yeah.
Because if you start and stop, like you say, Saturday and Sunday, um, nobody's going to be worried about getting payroll in, because it's a weekend. It would. So what would end on Saturday would be due Monday morning, so to speak.
Saturday would probably go on the next payroll, if, because if we cut it, cut it off on Friday, like every other town does.
Yeah.
No problem. The only issue is getting everything done and before us to sign.
Right.
And in that case, I believe Lori had said that we can appoint one of us to at least sign the original, and then when we have our meeting, we vote on it.
Well, what I was, I don't know, maybe on, if payroll ends on a Saturday, payroll would not be due for submitted for Thursday and, well, the week before, is the way we've been doing it. So if we sync it so, because it's every two weeks, if you sync it right, then everything will fall into place going forward.
When we had talked about this before, I believe, the accountant said, it may be one to get it to sync. We may have to do it one week.
Right.
And then go into the two week.
Because then anything from when you, you submit it on a Thursday for the following week, that's already going to be on the pay period after the one that you're setting up for, if you sync it right.
Yeah.
Right?
The, um, the pay week on, is it in the rules and rights? Because the rules and rights that I have said Saturday to Friday.
Yeah, you don't have the new ones.
Okay.
We're still gonna tweak some of that.
Okay.
So we're, we're getting through with Lori to.
To hopefully be able to do it for September 5th. Us, that Sunday to Saturday?
You also want the, um, sick vacation and personal to be on the checks for that, Dee?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, do everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, we got you. Can you give us an update on Colbrook Road?
Colbrook Road, yes. Um, they owe all of 2024, I think, two quarters of, or one quarter of 23.
And what's your process now? You gotta send letters.
Yep, so letters will go out saying that anyone who owes taxes for that time period will have to pay by a certain date, or a lien will be put on their property.
You do that townwide anyways.
Yes.
You're talking the old Butler Place, I assume.
Yes.
How long is the lien before the town can take the property?
I believe it's at least six months. So after the lien's put on, they'll get another letter saying the lien was put on and give them another opportunity.
Yeah.
Now, is there a lender that, my understanding is there isn't on the property, but do we know that for sure?
Yeah. Don't know.
Well, it makes it easier than if there's a lender.
Yeah.
Well, if there's a lender, you could go out to the taxes, but to the lender.
Yeah, because if there is a lender, the lender typically pay it, and then they'll work with them to.
Either at an auction or they, they would, yeah, lose their money.
Right.
The bank.
Yeah. Anything else, Wendy?
Um, vacation time, I mean, holiday time, the library came up recently. It's not anything that I had seen, so I questioned it specifically because one person I put in for nine hours for a vacation day, I mean, holiday day for that day, and I'm like, even if you work 40 hours, you wouldn't get nine hours. And then a couple of the other girls had it in too, so I questioned it, and I pulled it off and told them that, you know, I'd have to bring it up to you and see where you stood on it, because I didn't want to be setting precedents.
Did they give any explanation?
She said because they worked that day, and when she looked back in her book, she's new, she did find that a couple of people got paid on Thanksgiving. That was the one other day that, um, I didn't catch it when it went through. The reason why I caught this is, like I said, the nine, like stood out at me, because it said seven, four, and that was the last day.
How much, what were the hours that they got paid in Thanksgiving, if I can ask, like for the employees?
I would have to pull it.
Would it be like, you know, oh, that normally wouldn't be a four-hour day?
So what was the reason for working the holiday?
No, they didn't work the holiday. They were trying to get paid for the holiday.
Right.
But nine hours.
No, no, I get that, but you said they worked, they had hours for Thanksgiving.
They put through hours for, um, holiday time for Thanksgiving, but I didn't catch it.
So there, nobody worked?
No, nobody worked. And the reason why it hadn't come up before is because most of the holidays are Mondays, and they're not open on Mondays.
Right. Yeah, except for Christmas, New Year's, and Fourth of July, all the rest are Mondays. Yeah, that's Thursday, sorry.
We're gonna have to go through that carefully.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a little bit tricky.
Which is why we had it on the annual to change it.
Right.
There are four different benefits, and they say all different things. Who's eligible, who isn't? They're all different. Personal days. For example, you can get two extra personal days if you're going more than 500 miles from the town of Okan. Actually, not personal days, bereavement days. What number of bereavement days do you get to begin with? It's not in there. Is it a week? Is it a year? What is it? It's not in there. But if you're gonna go more than 500 miles, you're only getting two days.
Two additional days.
Two additional days.
Addition to what?
Exactly. I know, yeah.
And one is if you're working under 20 hours, you don't get any benefits, and one says you do.
That's the, that's a big problem.
You know, depends if it's vacation or holiday, one says one thing, one says the other.
Even if you had a policy, something like that is gonna be arbitrary anyways. Because most people in those circumstances are like, I'm gonna take what I need and who, you know, take care of, needs to be taken care of.
That's a bigger discussion.
It is a big, it's a very large discussion.
But I think in the meantime, she's trying to figure out how does she proceed, because she withheld those.
She did.
To be able to question it, did let her, the library know, but still has to pay it this upcoming period, one way or another. Typically, yeah, like she said, the nine hour is what stood out, because I don't even think that they're open a full. Yeah.
Ten to seven.
It's seven.
Saturday, ten to two.
So, but so that was a Thursday, they're open 10 to 7, so Fourth of July was.
Yeah, I don't know.
It was a holiday, it was a municipality where they opened?
No.
So nobody worked?
Right, but the holiday pay.
But they got the day off.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's my, that's my point on the holiday thing. What are we doing? Are we paying? Are we giving?
If you're scheduled to work typically, you would get that paid. If it doesn't land on your day to work, you're already making, let's say you're 24 hours, so now if you incorporate four more hours for a holiday, it's 28 more than what you would ever get.
So that holiday falls on a workday.
You get paid what you're scheduled for.
Right, and if you weren't scheduled for that, they didn't get paid.
That's the big question.
Or did you get the time not to go to work?
Right.
What Don said.
Right. And, and beyond this, is the budget set up for that?
Mm-hmm.
I've never heard them say, we have time.
I have never heard that either.
I've heard base salary stuff, you know, six million dollars a week. I've never heard.
No.
They pay or.
No.
I mean, most companies, you know, town is not a company, but you have a rotating 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation. Everybody's scheduled different days, so if you're off on the holiday, you're off on the holiday, and they paid you, if you were a 10-hour shift, eight-hour shift, you got that pay. So instead of a 40-hour week, you say you got a 48 hours, but you weren't scheduled to work, so you got it. If you were scheduled to work, you still got the eight hours, and then you got time and a half rate for coming into work.
Right.
On the holiday.
Right.
Which makes it double time and a half.
Yep.
Theoretically.
Right, it does.
But those are contracts and company and employee negotiations with a private industry, not necessarily municipal. Which is in effect what we do with the highway. If they come plow snow on Christmas Day, that's a normal day off, and they're full-time, they're 40 hours, they're getting paid the holiday.
Right.
They come into work. You know, that, that applies to them.
Yeah.
I believe they go time and a half.
They do.
Holiday, so.
Yeah.
But it's apples and oranges between the library and the highway department or the police department.
Yeah. We gotta review the bylaw for holidays to see if they're eligible.
We're gonna have to. I'll let Wendy know before, because you withheld that, right? Before the.
That definitely would be prorated, and employees like that don't have a set schedule would not be covered. So if they're like a pretty in-person, and you know, they work two hours this week, four hours that week, they definitely don't qualify.
Maybe you can.
Doesn't say anything about being prorated, but that's like industry standard.
So how many were there? How many were in question? A few of them?
I just, right.
Okay. Okay. You'll know, we'll need to go back and study this again. And and look at the idea of prorating as well, making sure that it's done properly. Very good, thank you so much.
And then I have one last thing I wanted to bring up because I've been working on this for months. Is the unemployment, the fraud issue that. We keep getting bills for, it has one of our employees' socials, but not the right name. And you know, I filed many protests and they keep coming back and saying. That no, you're supposed to be charged for that because they're looking at the social. Yes, one of our employees has a social, but I think they keyed it in wrong over there and they have the wrong name with the wrong social. And our employee even called in, filled out a fraud and I filled out a fraud and. You call there, you're on hold for an hour, they transfer you, you're on hold for another hour.
So the employee was never laid off?
Uh-uh, no. He's a full-time employee, has had no break in service, he didn't work anywhere else. That's why I think it's a bad error. I can't imagine that we'd have to pay for someone that. Not even accurate.
Definitely not. I I shouldn't think so.
I mean, is that something that? Town council would send a letter to. The unemployment?
I did because I feel like Wendy's tried every option and hasn't really gotten anywhere, not for. Do, you know, lack of her tries. I agree.
You could have the employee.
Yell my paperwork.
Well, if you, if we did that and had, you know, the employee a question. Do like an affidavit and have it notarized. Saying, no, this isn't me, how they got my number, I have no idea.
Yeah.
It's not me, you know?
We could try it. That's probably gonna get further than than what I've been able to do.
Well, I would think they. Probably take it a little more seriously if it was coming from council.
There's so many new people there too.
That's, they change a lot.
They can't answer the questions, they'll put you on hold, then they lose the call. It's frustrating. Just because you want some resolution, like I said, this has been going on for.
Are they accruing interest?
Number of last year.
Are they accruing interest?
Oh, yeah.
My god, time to turn it over to the state senate.
Yeah.
That's an idea.
That would, that would be another good option.
Or secretary of state.
Yep. I remember a couple of years ago, we were getting, we got two or three fraud statements and they did get cleared up.
Yeah.
But this one seems to be a little bit different with the social number not agreeing with the name.
Right.
That we're having a little more difficulty with it.
Right, so they look at the protest and they're like, wow, I don't know what you're talking about that social is.
Yep.
On the list every month.
The employee hasn't had any other things going on that would suggest they stole all his. You know, whatever, you know?
Yeah. No trouble with his credit cards? Not that we know of, he hasn't said anything. No.
I asked him if he had any problems, like, did you get a statement from them that someone was collecting under your social?
Right.
Because that's a big one to find out the people that is fraud is if you get a statement and you never collect unemployment. And he's like, no.
Okay.
Speaking of that. FY twenty-three audit report. Says. Currently, the general ledger continues to include two balances that are in deficit, withholding amounts. They are retirement and child levy withholding. Both sit around two thousand in deficit, they've existed for several years. The balances should be investigated to determine why they're in deficit and adjusted accordingly. Do you know anything about that?
No, because because my understanding it's really old, like four or five years old. So it's even gonna be hard to try to research it at this point. I mean, we can go back and see what we can find, but.
I think what they wanted is off the books.
Right, exactly.
That's what they want.
Yeah.
Did I email you this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was actually looking at it the other day.
Several other things with treasury office that. Was that thirty-six fifty, roughly, total?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I looked it over this morning, right after it came in.
Yes.
Yeah, there's tailings, tailings hadn't been done in a long time.
Yeah, I mean driveway.
I I thought we had fixed up the driveway part of it before. Where we tried to.
We didn't vote on. We didn't vote to do anything with it.
Okay.
So there's roughly thirty-five thousand in that. Give or take change.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And the permit, the fee is four hundred dollars. So.
It was four hundred, I don't know if it went up or not over the years, but it was four hundred.
But we never, I mean, four, four hundred and two. That's a lot of driveways that. Are they done? Did they get done and they forgot to? Ask for the reimbursement? I mean, we.
It's a possibility.
It would seem we kinda need an audit on that, right? Kevin had the records. Yeah. Way, way back. Yep, back to the beginning of it, yeah. Snow. Well, yeah, I mean, they predate. Think we have to publish something that we have this, if you're entitled to it, get ahold of us, type of deal.
Okay.
There's a way to do it. Yeah, but the other side of it is that four hundred. Would have been held and then the next time the road was paved. There should have been money coming out of that to pave that.
That one portion.
That driveway that they didn't do and then, because then you take the money, because right now it's like a, a holding escrow account. And that's why most towns say after two years, it automatically goes to free cash. Right. But there may be building permits out there. That haven't been acted on and there's four hundred dollars there. I don't know how many of those it would be, that's why I said, we we don't know.
Have no idea.
Without an audit of it to see, okay, how many are done? Have been done on it, the homeowner's. Expense. How many were done when roads were paved and? And didn't end up getting recorded and and a check sent back. I mean, it's, that's a lot of money. I mean. Well, why don't we ask? What's that, eight hundred? Or eighty? If you divide it out. I was just doing it in my head. Well, I was, I was thinking four into thirty-two is eight. Yeah, eighty. So. I mean, that. I don't know whether eighty aprons out there that aren't paved. Oh, I did. I would think a lot of them, just in different paving projects were incorporated and.
Exactly, yeah.
There should be a check going back to. When the, or that money should be going into the general fund.
Yeah.
If the town did it.
Right.
You know, you know, and the homeowner is probably like, well, ain't worried about it because they paid it, they did it. But it's. Yeah.
And moving forward, regardless of which way, I think a cleaner, more straightforward permit application needs to be. Established. I know we've talked about this before where it's all. Spelt out on the current application, it doesn't say after X amount of time it forfeits. It's more on a verbal agreement and if someone sells that house, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not very clear, so I think that would help.
I mean, how many of them were in the cul-de-sacs? And the houses were built.
Yeah.
Driveways were paved when they, you know, they paved the cul-de-sac. And it's just. Forgotten. I mean, how many of those eighties or Forest Hill? Schoolhouse Drive hasn't been accepted yet.
Yeah.
That's twenty houses.
Yeah.
So. I'm sure there was a four hundred dollar for each one of those driveways in that, in that. Subdivision plan. Right? I would think. And then down here too.
Yes.
I didn't even think about that one, yeah.
Even okay.
Forest Hill was this one.
Be another one that might have some problem.
Skyline Drive.
Skyline and Old Schoolhouse.
That's what I meant on that, on that side. So that could be all eighty of them for all we know, give or take one or two. We don't know.
You should, wanted to think, there should be a record somewhere. Oh, Kevin definitely had. A notebook ledger that was handed to him from the prior superintendent.
Right.
I mean, it goes back to. Nineteen eighties or even a few before that, I think, I, I mean.
No, I I'm sure it's an accurate folder. It has all the permits in it and who it was to and where it was.
I don't think it goes back quite as far as when I came because I know we never paid four hundred dollars. No, I know there was not in the nine. And that was in nineteen seventeen. In the eighties.
It was in the eighties.
It would have to be later. That we've heard about it that you have to do that because so many people were, were not.
Because the eighties, there was a lot of building in town.
There was a lot of building coming in. Carol, I'm sure he inherited the book.
Maybe we'll give him a week or two.
Yeah, I I think I'm gonna need to.
I mean, not knowing any of us, not having the book in front of them, it would seem.
But I just remember. Nineteen eighty-five or so, I remember the question, you know, being said. Do we have all the money, has it been given back for those that put in their aprons and like that into their things and? They didn't have solid questions and answers back then either. It's just something that's accrued over the years.
Yeah, only now it's kind of serious money.
It is, yeah, you know, when you saw that and I, well, we know it was quite a bit last year when we were talking about it, but now it's. Getting even more, yes.
Yeah.
Indeed. All right, well. Maybe we can find something.
Because I don't have an account that has, you know, that amount of money in it.
I I don't think we ever had it.
It should be. It should be under. The accountant's report.
Oh, yeah, it's broken out in the.
For total.
But we didn't have, as far as I know, we don't have it in a separate account, just that.
Oh, it must, must be in the general fund.
So, yeah, there was thirty-four thousand.
I don't think it's in a special stabilization just for that. That I remember.
So Lori said back in April, there was thirty-four thousand six hundred. She, in order to close it out or do anything, she would need. She would need to reconcile the um, the highway, the funds with the records, so she would need a copy of the logs. And she would also need a copy of the driveway permit policy or bylaw. However, it was handled. To close it or to do anything.
But I don't, I don't think we could really close it in good faith without knowing. What we owe or what's been accomplished and what hasn't.
I thought like a few years back, and correct me if I'm wrong, the audit said, or was it the prior accountant maybe just leave certain. A certain portion in it and transfer a lot of it to free cash.
Well, that's what the audit said.
Yeah, okay, that's what I would call.
But you can't verify movement to free cash.
Yeah.
Driveway permit bonds recorded in the town agency fund, town's agency fund.
That's on the accountant's books.
Total thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. A ten-year review of this agency fund indicates that there is very minimal activity in the account. And it generally sits between thirty-four, thirty-seven thousand. There's no detail that supports this amount, especially as it relates to the older years. So. We recommend the highway superintendent and accountant work together to determine the composition of the balance. And whether residents were paid in prior periods. From general fund Mondays or if at all. Recorded deposits for which the general fund was charged for repayment, the property owner should be transferred to the general fund. If after researching this, the amounts appear to have been abandoned, the town could complete a tailings process. Under general law, chapter two hundred A, section nine A. Under the statute, amounts that remain unclaimed may be credited as a miscellaneous revenue. The general fund, once all these steps are completed. So theoretically, we could have permits from the nineteen eighties. And they never paved their apron and the houses sold three or four times.
Yeah. Yes.
Over the last. Close to forty years.
Yeah.
And we would have. Only maybe today it's paved, but. Like I say, the house could have. Changed hands multiple times.
Right.
From the original permit in the nineteen eighties. But it still should be in the ledger, the address or the lock number.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so. Might be a good job on a rainy day. Just with a simple yes or no, paved, no paved.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think if it's paved, then. Might even go in the general fund, right?
Yes.
Well.
No, there's.
Unless the homeowner paved it and they took out the permit.
They get the money back.
And they owed four hundred bucks, but they just forgot that they had to do that. I mean, which they have a, they certainly.
They should have.
Responsible to take care of their own stuff.
Have a receipt if they did. And that's why I think that moving forward with a new form, it should say that in, in this period, you don't complete it, then you forfeit the funds. That way it's not guessing.
That's what.
Because it was never set a, a timeframe.
Yep. Every other town does that. They don't keep it forever.
Yeah.
But the other thing is. Actually, I think they're. The owner of the property isn't necessarily the person.
Who paid it.
Thinking they.
Yes.
The builder.
It can be one or the other.
And that would complicate it.
Yes.
And all these new homes were all buildings.
Yep. They are.
What do you think that's under? Zoning?
Maybe. No clue.
Driveway road connections. Chapter seventeen forty-nine. Section one, no person may build or construct any connection between any private driveway in the town of Ocam. And any public road in the town without first obtaining. A permit from the board of selectmen adopted at special town meeting, June twenty-seventh nineteen eighty. Approved by Attorney General Maladi, November fourth nineteen eighty. And that's all it says. So the. The permit fee must be in minutes of an old town meeting in nineteen eighty somewhere.
Another project.
Must this.
The good news is it's not any further back than nineteen eighty.
Yeah.
You got a timeframe.
Forty-four years and a month. Well, not quite a month, June twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty. And then chapter seventeen. Starts blood plane districts.
Definitely a little project.
Yeah, I will go through the. Files up there, I'm sure. Those minutes of a meeting where that four hundred. Was adopted.
Has to be, because I've been hearing it since nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah.
So it had to have been. Prior to that. I can go up and check out some of the. Material they have up there, see if I can find it. I'm retired.
Well, I'm sure it's in a very accurate binder up there. There are people that go, I want my four hundred back after they pave their driveways. Yeah, you know, and they build a new house, so. It's an active file.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll check out, see what I can find up there.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Next on the item of the agenda, end of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, discussion year-end transfers. To vote and to sign. There's an end-of-the-year transfer request for the town of Ocam. Requesting that. From. One account to another, there's going to be a transfer from the highway full-time wages, transfer to highway superintendent wages. For three thousand, eight hundred, twenty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And one for highway full-time wages, quab and assessment. Eighty-five cents.
It's negative eighty-five, needs to be zeroed.
This is not penny.
Do we have to include the stamp?
What would the board like to do with this transfer?
Make a motion to transfer is written.
A second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's part of closing out.
And while you guys assign and this board does not have to sign these, but. The, um. Fincom did. Uh, sign or had one member sign. On behalf of Fincom with them all agreeing for some reserve transfers that were requested.
Thank you.
Transfer is made now, everybody.
Hopefully, that's. Well, they had to be all signed by today. So. Yes. Unless encumbrances, we have until August thirty-first, as long as you have it in your budget to encumber a bill for fiscal twenty-four. By law, any transfers. Of any sort needed to be done by today.
Basically, we're done with twenty-four.
Yes, because anything after. Would have to be handled later on.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else for that line item? No, we're all set.
No.
Any, excuse me, any new business to come before the board? Nothing?
No.
No? Any old business to come before the board?
Now think about it on the way home.
On your long drive.
Nothing catastrophic, I don't think.
Nothing, okay. Under correspondence, I just would like to notify the board that I received an anonymous complaint. To the entire Board of Selectmen, it just came under my name. It has long been a practice for the former boards. Not to respond or address any complaints that are unsigned. The board welcomes the complainant to address the board at an open meeting. We ask that the person, if he wishes to, or she wishes to be known. And discuss this with us, to come before us and to please call Maribel. And be placed on the agenda and we'll be happy to discuss this issue with you. That's my opinion. And I follow with what the boards have done in the past. And I think anybody that has a complaint has a perfect right to complain, but should make himself or herself known and come before the board.
I agree.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting of July fifteenth. Twenty twenty-four. At. Six fifty-seven P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.